Yes, so, um, if there are Chinese speakers, please click the globe icon and select Chinese. The microphone icon provides the ability to mute and unmute your microphone. When your microphone is muted, you will see a red slash across it. Then, uh, the camera icon allows you to start or stop your video. Please be aware that we are recording this forum. If you'd rather not be seen in the recording, please feel free to turn off your video. The audience tonight, uh, will have two options for asking questions. You can either type your questions in the chat box or virtually raise your hands during the audience Q and A session. If you'd like to submit your questions, please use the Zoom chat function. Click the chat button and a chat box will pop up for you to answer your question. If you can't find the chat button on the menu bar, simply click on the more button at the far right and you will find the chat button there. If you'd like to ask a question yourself instead of having the moderator read it, you can also virtually signal your intention by raise your hand. To do this, click the reactions button and click on raise hand. We will be alerted that you have raised your hand. When the moderator calls your name, please unmute yourself and share your questions with everyone. For both candidates and panelists, please keep your microphones muted. I'm here at your terms to, uh, to speak. For all the, for audience members, uh, please keep your microphone muted at all times and only unmuted if the moderator invites you to ask the question during the audience Q and A session. Thank you so much for your understanding and cooperation. And, uh, please welcome May Hong, uh, the executive director of the Chinese Culture Connection.
Good evening, everyone. I'm May Hong of the Chinese Culture Connection. Thank you so much for taking the time and effort to participate in this event. And, uh, I hope that you, uh, um, take away from tonight's eve, uh, the, the experience. Um, the event is a collaborative effort among Chinese Culture Connection, the American Association for Arab Women, Bread of Life, Mass Senior Action Council, Malden Reads, and the North Shore Hispanic Association. Among our collaborators, we are non-profit, non-political grassroots organizations with a shared mission to empower our community through cultural and civic education. Part of Forum is part of our East Miss West Cultural Dialogue Series and ongoing civic engagement education effort to help our voters become more informed, um, um, and educate, uh, voters so that they can take, uh, action in their civic engagement. So, we hope that you will learn, uh, a lot from tonight's event. And now I would like to have this turned over to our, uh, called, uh, moderator, Jody Zok of Malden Reads. Thank you.
Thank you, May. I want to, uh, reiterate, um, what Jen Kuh said that there is Chinese language interpretation available for folks who need that. If you need that, um, the instructions are in the chat as well. Um, I really want to thank the Chinese Culture Connection for hosting tonight's forum. Really, it's such an important thing to have an active democracy with active participation across the community. And really want to thank all of the candidates for participating as well as everyone who's here tonight and as well as everyone who's viewing this later. Um, again, it only functions as a democracy when we all are active participants. So, thank you, everyone. Um, the candidates for school committee are, um, Michael Drummy, Jennifer Spatafora, Elizabeth Horty, Keith Bernard, and Sharon Rose Ziber. Um, I believe we only have a, um, a portion of those candidates here with us this evening and we'll be calling them, um, uh, on them in a little bit. I want to make sure to go over some of the rules of the road before we get to the questions. And I want to again thank the different collaborating organizations, um, who has cosponsors tonight's event as well as the city council, uh, candidates forums, um, which were supported by UMA as well. Um, so thank you again. I want to give a special shout out to Suwad Akib from the American Association for Arab Women, Marsha Manong, representing the Bread of Life. Um, May, I want to thank you and your team from the Chinese Culture Connection. Um, want to, um, let you know I'm representing Malden Reads. Um, and also thank Karen Lynch from the Mass Senior Action Council and Gladys Rivera Rogers from the North Shore Hispanic Association. We also have students with us here tonight. Um, I've talked a lot about how important I think democracies work with active participation. I think they're also important with student engagement and preparing the next, uh, generation. So, we have the key club here tonight as well as some of the, um, student leaders from the CCC programs. And you'll see one of the students who will be, um, holding up cards for the timing. Um, and so the timing information and the speaking format for this evening, each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement. And then there will be time for panelist questions as well as audience questions. Each of the other, um, portions will be one and a half minutes. So, we have two minutes for the opening statements. Everything else will be two and a, I'm sorry, one and a half. So, um, Nick will be the time keeper and you will see him. Um, he will be pinned to the screen. He will have a green card that says thirty seconds when you reach, uh, that time. Thanks, Nick. Um, and then when there are ten seconds left, he has a yellow card that says ten seconds. And then when, um, the candidate's, uh, speeches to a portion of their, uh, responses to a close, you'll get a red card and you'll be asked to stop at that time. Um, some additional ground rules before we jump in. Questions can be asked in the chat box and, um, you can type those questions in at any time. And then when we get to the audience question portion of the evening, we'll be able to ask those. We will do our best to include as many audience questions as we can with time a lot, um, uh, as time allows within the allotted time, um, before seven thirty. So, hopefully, we will get to all of the questions. Um, we ask again that everybody stays on mute until the, uh, candidates will unmute themselves and our panelists will unmute themselves as they ask their questions. Um, and we ask that everybody treat all of the candidates fairly and, um, appreciate everybody for joining us this evening. So, with that long welcome and ground rules, we now are going to turn to the reason that you're here with us this evening and hear from the candidates and hear from them with their opening statements. So, I am going to, um, in random order, ask that, uh, Jennifer Spatafora speak first. Um, and then, um, the next time I call on candidates, um, uh, Ms. Spatafora, you will, um, be in a different order. So, you'll have two minutes at this point.
Wonderful. Um, thank you so much for having me. Um, good evening, everybody, um, remotely, virtual world. My name is Jen Spatafora. I'm the current Ward Three School Committee representative and candidate for reelection. I'd like to think I am running unopposed because the residents of Ward Three and of Malden believe in the work that I put in the past three terms. A little over six years ago, I was the mother to a thriving fourth grader, a graduating Malden High School senior and an eight-year-old receiving special, special education services in the district. I was a frustrated mother lacking sleep and support due to the fight that I had to endure just to have the district acknowledge my child's diagnosis. I had said to myself, why isn't there more oversight in our special ed department? Why is it so difficult for our, our students to receive the services that they so desperately need? And it was with those questions I made the decision to run for office and make a change for my child, um, and for every student struggling in the district. I wanted parents to know that there was someone sitting in this seat that cares about their child, that understands the struggles of inequitable learning in the special education space and the stigma that our children would be better serviced out of district or in a sep- uh, separate classroom. I wanted caregivers to know that they weren't alone and that I would walk with them. Um, so as we get into the questions, I hope that you get to hear my vision for the district and not just for the next two years, but long-term goals to ensure every student receives the education our Massachusetts Constitution promises. As we get into the questions, I hope you get to, oh, I'm sorry. I will look forward to, I'm thrown off by my ten seconds. I look forward to hearing from fellow school committee members as well on how we can work collaboratively to move forward, um, in this district. And lastly, thank you to all the sponsors. Thanks, guys.
All right. Thank you so much. Um, next we'll call on Elizabeth Horty to share her opening remarks. You'll have two minutes.
Hi. Is this all set? Can everybody hear me? Awesome. I'm Elizabeth Horty. Um, before I get started, I want to say thank you to everybody for facilitating this forum this evening. Um, it's always good to have the opportunity to share with everybody your reason for taking up this opportunity as well as, um, what I'm thinking about for Ward Five and for the city. Um, I moved here fourteen years ago with my husband and it, um, to, knowing that we would start a family in Malden, appreciating it for its diversity, um, and really thinking that this was something that we wanted to do here, an urban setting with a lot of interesting things happening. Currently, I have twin boys that are in eighth grade and attend the Forestale School. They've been in the district since kindergarten. And we have had a really good experience with a lot of different things along the way, including experiences with both the special ed process and the five oh four process. Um, professionally, I am a clinical social worker who works both in a small private practice as well as, and I work as an adjustment counselor in a different district. So, I'm aware of the inner workings of the school system, the challenges, um, and other pieces that may affect both our students and our parents. So, I would like to take that knowledge that I have of being on the other side as well as the knowledge that I have from my education in terms of some policy work and things like that to bring to the school committee. And I'm looking forward to working with everybody involved. Thanks for having me.
Thank you, Ms. Horty. I understand that candidate, um, in, um, school committee, uh, member, Michael Drummy, has now joined, uh, the Zoom. So, let's first test you on, uh, won't test you, but will test your audio and make sure that we can hear you. And then we'll allow you, uh, two minutes for your opening remarks.
How's that? Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, we can do a Verizon commercial. Hi, uh, my name is Michael Drummy. Uh, I'm the Ward One representative on the, uh, Malden School Committee. I'm just finishing my fourth term, which is basically my eighth year. It's, it's an intriguing group of people. I'll, I'll put it that way. I worked with a great bunch of people the last three years and, uh, we, we do well. We, we, we work well. We take, make sure we do what we want to have the kids, uh, taken care of. Uh, I said when I first started, uh, I wa- I wanted to be able to represent the district, uh, or the city rather as a whole, not just, just one ward. And, and it's, and it's kind of difficult, uh, unlike the city council. We have five K through eight schools, a high school and an E L C. And it would be great if there was, you know, representative in each area, but it, there really isn't. So, you have to take, you, you take the district as a whole. I luck out in that I have the ferryway down the street from me. Uh, and impartial to because three of my kids went there. Uh, that was again, one of the reasons why I, I, I ran because I figured, hey, why not? But it was like to pay back. I, I, I've lived in the city. My wife and I moved here thirty-one years ago and my wife had a, um, a, a, uh, an aunt that was a teacher at the high school and she said Malden had a good school system and that was important to us because we had, uh, young kids and she was pregnant with our third at the time. So, that paid an important part in us coming here. And I just feel I'm just giving back to the city that I've been a part of for the last thirty-one years. And that's pretty much it. I'm good.
Thank you. All right. So, we will move over to our, uh, set of questions that are, are prepared by our panelists. And our first question is from Aria, who is, uh, representing, um, students from Malden High School. So, Aria, I will ask you to read the first question.
Sure. So, to start off, the question is just, what is motivating you to run for school committee? What experience do you bring and what are a few key experiences with the Malden Public Schools? Um, the next further question is going to be, one of the main reason, oh, sorry. So, do you want me to repeat that question? Can you guys hear me all right?
Yeah. Could you repeat that, please, Aria, just to make sure that, um, folks heard that, uh, correctly?
What is motivating you to run for school committee? What experiences do you bring and what are a few key experiences with the Malden Public Schools?
Fabulous. Thank you. Uh, first, we will call on Ms. Horty to answer the question. You'll have one and a half minutes.
Uh, I would say that the thing that was motivating me most to run is I feel as though in the last few years, being both a parent and a school employee, I feel like I've learned a lot about what it needs to happen in schools, generally speaking, but also what isn't happening. And my role in, in my day job as an adjustment counselor, I have an interesting position that I get to see, um, students in a different way than like a, a classroom teacher might. So, I can see things that are affecting their academic performance in a different way. Um, but again, as an adjustment counselor in a school district, there's only so many things that I can do to help or to move programming or clearly I spend a lot of my day working on social emotional learning. Um, but then as a parent in the Malden Public School District, um, my stu- my, my sons, like I said, one of them had gotten through the I E P process. So, I interacted a lot with different individuals in the district at that point. Um, he currently has a five oh four, which if people are familiar with, that's another sort of, um, piece of support that's different than an I E P. So, I've worked with the system on those different types of services to put in place for my parents spent time on the, the P T O at Forestale and volunteered for different activities and things like that. I think that the true heart of the motivation though is I, I see the things that our children need and how different they are than the things that maybe I might have needed when I was in school. And I think it's important that we really look towards changing things so that it's more acceptable to what they need at this time.
Thank you so much. Um, next I will call on Mr. Drummy to answer that question.
Uh, like I said, when we first came here, we were, uh, part of the reason was the, it was a good school district. But the main reason I first ran is because no, I ran on a sticker campaign. Nobody was actually running for office. And I felt that kind of sad because why wouldn't you pay attention to your children? I mean, you know, granted by that point, my kids are out of the system, but you have to take an interest and want to take an interest in what's going on, at least I do from my perspective. And I just, you know, once I got in, it's, yeah, like I said, it's a good group and, and, and the idea is we want to work and make sure the kids get what's best for them. The first year I was in, we had a, uh, budget deficit of two point five million and we had to do some cuts. And we, and we didn't cut into the classroom, which was what our whole purpose. We didn't want to do that. Uh, and then going forward, we've been lucky enough that we, uh, the mayor has been able to facilitate a, a budget for us that we, we haven't had to have any deep cuts. And it's, uh, and moving forward, I, I, you know, hopefully that'll stay the same. I don't know if it will. Uh, I can't see into the future, so we'll see. But that's basically it. Nobody was running. I decided to step in. Silly me.
Okay. Thank you so much. Uh, Ms. Spatafora, you have one and a half minutes.
Thank you. Um, my children motivated me to run. Um, you know, I think all of us as parents, our, our children motivate us to be better, to do better, to make the world better for their benefit. Um, I also, being a, a working mom, there's this realization that my children were spending essentially more time in school and in a classroom than they were at home because by time they might have gone to, you know, after school programming and then, oh, my dogs decide to bark now. They are great. Um, by time they come home, it's, it's homework dinner in bed. So, I really was motivated to make sure that the time that they were away from me was quality time where they were, um, really learning and growing. And I'd say my experience just comes from being a parent, um, being passionate about education, being passionate about the special education world. I do have a background in finance, so, uh, I, I love numbers. Um, and I think that, that definitely does help, um, especially in our district where we somewhat struggle with, um, our, our, you'll hear it all the time, our chapter seventy funding formula is in disarray. So, um, I, I think I bring that experience, but it just being a passionate, um, parent motivates me to, to be here and continue to, to help our students. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Our second question we're going to move on to is being asked by Marsha Manong.
Thank you, uh, Jody, and thanks to the candidates. Um, my question is, one of the main areas of responsibility, um, of the school committee is approving the budget for the school system. What are your areas of priority to include in the budget? Um, are there areas you would consider cutting? And, um, sort of a three-pronged question. There are large numbers of vacancies, um, ex- currently existing in a Malden school system. What would, what's your perspective on filling the vacancies and preventing further staff issues? Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. So, we will first, uh, for this question, turn to Mr. Drummy.
Thank you. Um, I'll tackle the budget first. Um, it's tough. You don't want to get into the classroom. I mean, that, that's first and foremost. Uh, you want to stay outside of that. And like I said, the first, the first year, uh, I was on it, we had to cut transportation and that was a big issue. Uh, but we, we, you try to look to see what new programs are coming. I mean, we just got done redoing, uh, some of the buildings. They, they've been updated and everything. It's, it's just trying to, based on my, uh, experience, just go with what superintendent gives as, as a basis. We talk amongst ourselves, what do we like to see? What do we want to see getting done? And we try to do it. Uh, as far as teaching goes, I know, uh, the current, uh, superintendent is trying to, uh, this, uh, what did I read in the paper today? Uh, something about, uh, attendance, uh, is off, uh, by like ninety-two percent, uh, statewide. But we're only down, if you go to a high school, oh, even at that, forty-two percent absenteeism. It's better than the state average, but forty-two percent isn't all that great. Uh, so, you know, it is what it is. And we, I just, just try to make what's best for the kids and try to hope we can, it works out. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Spatafora, um, we'll give you one minute and a half to answer Martha's question.
Thank you for this question. Um, I'm going to try to get to the nitty gritty really quick and that's, we never want to, we never want to take anything away, ever. Um, you know, I think when it comes to our budget, um, we have to think outside of the box too. We have to go after as many, um, grants that are out there as possible. Um, I would say what I consider after coming off of, um, negotiations last year with our, our union, our priority really kind of needs to be salaries because without people in the classroom, we're not going to have, um, we, we don't have anybody teaching our kids. We have to be really competitive in, in this market because after the pandemic, so many teachers were burnt out, worn out, tired, they left the industry. So, making sure that we are competitive in our salaries, um, focusing the money that we do have on, um, specifically, um, thank you. Adjustment counselors, um, our, our mental health and our, our students is very important. I think we're very lucky that we have a finance director that works magic right now. Um, and really make sure that if we need to cut, we're not taking out of the classroom. We're really focusing on, on more of like operations and maintenance. How can we pay less for our electric bills or utilize grants? So, um, thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, and Ms. Horty, um, it is your turn for this question about the budget.
Thank you so much. Um, one of the things that I think about when I was thinking about budget, when you brought that up, was I have survived both budget cuts as a student, budget cuts as a employee and budget cuts as a parent a little bit. And the one thing that I, that keeps coming back to my mind is someone mentioned this phrase to me at one point in my, the school-based portion of my career and it really resonated me and with me and it really rang true during COVID. And that was, this student only gets fifth grade once or only gets sixth grade once. I don't want that experience to be different because we don't budget for it. We saw during COVID that that's what happened. There are students that didn't experience that year of school in the same way that all of the students had for many years prior. And it's been, we see that. We see that in our students. So, any budget cuts need to come from somewhere that's not directly student-related. I'm new to the budget world, so I'm hoping with assistance from other members on the committee that they can help me to understand that better. When it comes to vacancies, um, something that I know that has worked in my district is that we grow our own, if you will. We have students in the district that I work in who went to the high school who are, um, ESP professionals at this point. Um, so I, I think we might want to tap into in the city.
was I have survived both budget cuts as a student, budget cuts as a employee, and budget cuts as a parent a little bit. And the one thing that I, that keeps coming back to my mind is someone mentioned this phrase to me at one point in my, the school-based portion of my career, and it really resonated me and with me, and it really rang true during COVID. And that was, this student only gets fifth grade once, or only gets sixth grade once. I don't want that experience to be different because we don't budget for it. We saw during COVID that that's what happened. There are students that didn't experience that year of school in the same way that all of the students had for many years prior. And it's been, we see that. We see that in our students. So, any budget cuts need to come from somewhere that's not directly student-related. I'm new to the budget world, so I'm hoping with assistance from other members on the committee that they can help me to understand that better. When it comes to vacancies, um, something that I know that has worked in my district is that we grow our own, if you will. We have students in the district that I work in who went to the high school who are, um, ESP professionals at this point. Um, so I, I think we might want to tap into in the city. I think I'm done, right?
Perfect timing. Thank you so much. Um, so our next question has to do with, um, bullying, and I know that one of the students will be asking this. Aria, are you asking this or is Mark asking this question?
This from Mark.
Okay.
We're muted.
Mark, if you can come off mute.
You're still muted, Mark.
Mark, you're off mute, but we can't hear you.
Uh, I can, I can ask it if you'd like.
That would be great. Thank you so much, Aria. We'll try to come back to you later on, um, and hope that the audio issues for you are resolved, but thanks for being here and ready. Um, but Aria, if you can ask, thank you.
Sure. So in spite of Malden's bullying policy, students are still being bullied. Many teachers are not responsive and just ignore the students who report the bullying. Nor do they elevate the matter to a higher administrative level. As a school committee member, how will you help the parent of a child who doesn't want to go to school because of bullying or says, I wish I could just have one nice day at school?
Thank you for that question. And, uh, first this time, we'll ask Ms. Metaphora to answer that.
Thank you. Um, I'm actually living this right now in my home with a, a child of my own that, um, has, um, anxiety about going to school. And I think how can the school committee, first, I'm actually frustrated to hear that, um, teachers are doing nothing. That's, that's unacceptable. Um, every student should feel safe in the classroom. Every student should feel wanted in the classroom. Every student should walk through those doors and know that, um, they are wanted and, and belong. So I would tell a parent, if your, if your child is saying, I'm being bullied, go to the top, go to your school committee representative, go to the superintendent, be loud, make noise, demand change. Um, bullying is absolutely unacceptable, not tolerated, and you know, i- if we have policies in place that are not being invited by, we need to do better. There needs to be stricter policies. Um, but also from a mental health standpoint, why are these other students feeling the need to bully? What are the reasoning behind the behaviors? We need to dig deep because they're I, I, I don't want to say that those that bully are, are bad people or terrible people. There could be underlying problems.
Thank you, Ms. Metaphora. We've reached the time, but thank you for, for sharing and responding to that question. Um, Ms. Horty will ask you to answer that question next.
I think the first thing that I would definitely want to touch upon with that parent is how sorry I was that that was happening. Um, no matter how we try and intercept these things from happening on a day-to-day basis, it's very hard to stop them. However, that doesn't mean that they can't be. Um, but I think one of the more important things is I, as a school committee person, I think it's important to partner with the administrators in the building to start. And I agree with Ms. Metaphora that it, it might need to be elevated. I think I, I'd like to know a little bit more about what the policy and their procedure is. I, there is a law on the books in Massachusetts that you cannot bully students. Students cannot bully each other. There needs to be consequences. It's actually sort of cut and dry. Um, sometimes I think that teachers don't exactly know how to address the situation. So if the situation means that they don't know who they're reporting it to or how to need to consider for a professional development for staff or another way to educate people on the proper way to address this. Clearly, as the adjustment counselor, I also think that we need to figure out a little bit more about where this is all coming from. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Drummy?
Uh, first off, I agree with, uh, both Elizabeth and Jen, it should be elevated. If a teacher doesn't do anything, then shame on that teacher. I would, if I was the parent, I'd go right to the principal. And if I couldn't get anywhere with the principal, I'd go to, I'd go to the superintendent. It's, it, it's, this is something that is not, should not be tolerated regardless of why it's happening. I mean, I know Jen and prior to her, um, Kathy DeGracia, uh, both worked on policies for uh, bullying and we implemented them and updated the, uh, the policies, uh, in, in the thing, in our procedures, and it's there. So you can read it. Not only is there a, a state guideline, but there's also one from Malden, too, that we have. And if that's the case, then no, it's unacceptable that a teacher doesn't do anything. I'm sorry. You, you, a child should feel safe going to school, wanting to go to school, and not be nervous that he's going to be attacked or yelled at or some, it, it's just unacceptable. I'm sorry. And it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be allowed. And if we need to get in professional people to help, then maybe we should, but it just picks me off that nothing was done or nothing, that, that, that's, that's wrong. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we're going to shift gears. We're going to turn to Sawad to ask the next question.
Thank you, Judy. Thank you, everyone. So, uh, the question is, like, English language learners are struggling in, uh, Malden classrooms. There are not enough bilingual teachers. There are no extra study programs offered for these learners. There is no extra help offered to prepare for MCAS testing. These learners are not receiving equitable education, educational experience and are marginalized because English is not their first language. What are you, as school committee member, going to do to fix this problem for many Malden learners? Thank you.
Thank you, Sawad.
Thank you.
Um, first, uh, this time we'll have Ms. Horty.
Thanks for asking that question. I think we have discovered over time that being a student who's learning English is probably one of the most difficult things that they can be doing. Not only are they developing and growing and having all of these other things happen, but they're trying to learn a different language, but also learn in a different language. I can't imagine how complicated that is or how difficult that might be. Um, but I know that students in that position need extra support. So I think the question becomes, what supports do we have in place currently? What supports do students need? My understanding with ELL is that from my, from my other job is that there are certain levels where students need different levels of intervention from school. Um, and is there a way that we could do this together? This, you know, our schools are, are separate geog- geographically, and I know that we're trying to make everything more equitable. Is there a way that we can sort of streamline that so that everybody can get the help that they need? Um, I know that MCAS results just came out. We received ours yesterday. Um, and I, I could see how that would be a concern for most parents, but especially for parents of students who are learning the language. Um, trying to incorporate support into this, I think is I, I, I think I need to know a little bit more before I can completely answer that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we'll turn to Mr. Drummy.
Thank you. Um, learning any language is tough, but especially, uh, trying to learn English and get, learn the course of study at the same time, i- i- is twice as hard. Uh, granted, yes, we, we, we need, uh, people that, that can react and interact with the children. And again, it comes down to finding bodies to have people come in and, uh, even now trying to get people in the classrooms or in the building just to even help to translate, uh, is tough. So it, it's something that needs, that I know they're looking at, uh, um, Central is looking at, they're trying to do the best they can with what they have. Uh, it, it's I don't know, uh, again, you're looking at something that's that's tough, and we hope that we're trying to move them along, you know, gradually, but it, it doesn't always work that way. And hopefully at some point it will, but i- it's one of those questions that we, we look at and, okay, let's get more bodies into it, and it doesn't always work that way, but i- it, it, it's a tough question and we, we, we try. That's all I can say. We try.
Hey, thank you so much. And Ms. Metaphora?
Thank you. I normally don't bring my dogs to school committee meetings, so I'm sorry. Um, I tried to take some notes as you were reading that question off, um, so I wouldn't use up my minute thirty. So I'd say first, we have actually started by dispersing our L's, uh, students throughout all five stu- schools. At one point, they were all sent to Salemwood School when they first arrived in Malden. Um, so I think integrating them into classrooms throughout the district, so they're actually learning with their peers. Um, I, I do have, uh, my son has a friend that is new to the US. They communicate through, um, Google Translate, texting each other. So I think learning with those that speak the language with their peers, we don't want to separate them. We want them learning with those that speak the language. Um, I will say, I'm very passionate about, you said MCAS? I think the number one thing to do about stuff like that, we need to end MCAS testing. High stakes standardized testing does not view any of our students any good, especially those that are new to this country and learning to speak the language. Um, I will say, let's see, what else do I have here? Competitive pay again, goes back to getting teachers into the classroom. Um, Ms. Horty mentioned earlier in the question, building within those students that are L students that are thriving, maybe they want to get into education, maybe they want to come back and teach in the district. So we need to build, um, our, our staffing from within. And also
Thank you, Ms. Metaphora. Sorry, we're out of time for that, um, response. Um, we're going to shift gears and, um, move over to Karen Lynch, who will be asking the next question. Thank you, Karen. Um, if you could unmute yourself.
Thank you. Um, do you have a plan to make more world languages available in the Malden schools? Examples would be Arabic, Mandarin, there are many.
Thank you, Karen. I appreciate the question, um, knowing how culturally and linguistically diverse our community is. And for this question, um, we'll first start with, uh, Mr. Drummy. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, as far as, uh, languages go, it would be nice if we could have, uh, Jen, help me out here if you can. I know we have somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-six or twenty-seven different languages spoken in the school district. Uh, uh, it'd be nice to have a little bit of everything. Uh, but I, I'm not sure how we would be able to get all of that in. I, it would be nice to have at least one general area like, uh, Arabic, Spanish, uh, Portuguese, something like that. Uh, but, um, again, it comes down to trying to get the best qualified people to do it. And again, just this year alone, we've increased some of the pay, but not, you know, we got to get better at, at, at attracting more help, more culturally, uh, diverse. The kids can feel comfortable, and I, and I'm sure they do feel learning, somebody can speak their language. And that, that's something they're working on. It's a, it's a work in progress and hopefully at some point it'll balance out, but for now, we just try to do the best we can and see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, um, Ms. Metaphora.
Thank you. Um, so we are always willing to add more languages into our world language arts department if there is a want for it. Um, and I actually believe, I was just reading this recently, that if there is a certain percentage of the student body or parents that advocate for that language, um, we actually have to, um, implement that. So I, I don't know the, the percentage off the top of my head or the exact number, but, um, you know, over the past couple of years, we have added some, um, languages, it, not the basic, you know, Spanish, Latin, French, that was there twenty-somewhat years ago when I was in the high school. We now offer American Sign Language, which, um, is, is amazing. Um, so if, if students want it, um, and, and we have very passionate students that I see advocating all the time, um, whether it's for classes or, uh, change in lunchroom food, I encourage them to reach out, um, to, um, you know, their, their principals, um, school committee reps, but, um, I think the more the better. And, um, maybe partnering with some of our, like, the Immigrant Learning Center to, to help bring in some languages that we may not be familiar with that our, our students are interested in. So just some thoughts, but always willing to add more. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And Ms. Horty?
I think this is a great question, um, for a couple of reasons. One, uh, when I was hired at my current position, the, I work at a middle school and they were piloting a Mandarin program. Um, when I began, they're the only other language prior to that year had been Spanish. So I watched the Mandarin program go from sort of a half-year survey in sixth grade to students that are taking Mandarin four in the high school now. Um, and it's been fascinating to watch because like everything else, it started out as one teacher with one survey class, and then it built upon that because there was a faction of students that were interested in taking Mandarin. I've been wondering a lot actually about languages in general in our district because I think that we might want to consider more of a survey language approach even in the fifth through eighth grade. And I'm wondering if there's a way we could expose our students to multiple languages. In other words, if they could have a quarter of the year or something like that, where they could be exposed to things like Arabic, Mandarin, Portuguese, aside from, my boys have been exposed to Spanish at Forestale, and I love that for them. But I, I don't know that that's something that every student in eighth grade is getting, and I think they probably should. Um, I also think if we're starting this in middle school with sort of this survey approach, then it's a lot easier for us to build a program at the high school with some interest and some exposure.
Thank you. It sounds like, uh, the responses for that question as well as some of the other ones, um, could continue, and I hope there will be additional dialogue on these, uh, questions after tonight's forum. But we do need to move to the next question, um, which will be asked by, uh, Sawad again. Um, Sawad, if you can come off mute, please, and thank you.
Which one, uh, which question? I thought I'm gonna be doing only one.
Oh, sorry, Sawad. Um, this was the other question that we had talked about earlier. Yeah, I'll just post this, um, and then in the chat for you so you'll be able to ask. Great. Sorry, everyone.
I don't see it, Julie, on the chat. Yes, I find it. Thank you, Julie. Thank you. Massachusetts does not mandate sex education in schools, although it does mandate health education. After twenty-four years, Massachusetts, after twenty-four years, Massachusetts is updating its sex education guidelines. The updated framework will guide how elementary, middle, middle school and high school will approach sex education. There is concern by some parents that sex education regarding gender, identity and sexual orientation being taught maybe in direct opposition to their own beliefs. What advice do you offer these parents who wish to protect their children? Thank you.
Okay, Suad, thank you for that question and we'll go first to Ms. Batafora.
Hi, thank you for that question. I think I would advise parents to opt out. I'm pretty sure with this new curriculum that there are portions that you can adopt out of if you're not comfortable with your student learning that in the school setting and would prefer to discuss it in a home setting. So, and I think as parents, that still should be our, it should be in our ability as we're raising our, our children. So I, I think that any parent that felt uncomfortable, I'm hoping that now as this was mandated by DESI, this new curriculum, that our superintendent is now going to showcase what the students are going to be learning. So we are all familiar with each level from K up through high school because I do think sexual education is very important. But we need parents to know as well what they're learning. And I think transparency, communication, understanding what's being taught in the classroom and empowering parents to say, I'd like to have this conversation at home and not in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll turn to Ms. Hordy.
So I actually partner on a fairly regular basis with a current health teacher at my school and the actual former health teacher was on this curriculum writing committee. So I'm actually pretty familiar with what is in there. That being said, one of the things that I'd really want parents to understand is that it's developmentally appropriate curriculum for your child's age. We're not, there's nothing in there that's introducing an idea that a child has not necessarily come upon in their everyday life. A lot of the health curriculum also, which is available, the, the sort of pilot curriculum is available for people to look at and check through and see if there's anything that they have concerns about on the DESI website as well as reaching out to the teacher who is actually teaching the class. Like I said, I partnered with our health teacher and know that she often sends home pieces of curriculum that parents have questions about that they're concerned about. I think that's probably the best way for this to work. I think we really want kids to be as knowledgeable as is appropriate. But we also want parents to really understand what's going on in the classroom and what's being taught. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Drummy.
Uh, thank you. Uh, this has always been an intriguing question for me. Again, parents should have the final say. I mean, you do have the option to opt out if you don't want it, but talking to the teacher that will be presenting it, finding out what the groundwork is, what the, what the rules are, how far, that's something that, you know, get the conversation going with the teacher, see what, what's, how far it is. And if you do have any apprehens- or are apprehensive about certain subjects, say, all right, listen, I want to be able to talk to my child about this myself. Let's not really, you know, I don't, I don't want it to go too far. And in the, in the end, I don't know, when I had sex education in school, it was biology one, ninth grade, and we learned, oh, there's a male and a female and that was it. This is, times have changed. It's not the same now, but I think you still have to have the communication with the parent and the teacher and let, between the two of you, I think you can come up with a plan that would be appropriate for the child and make everyone happy. And I think that's the way it should be. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And now we're going to turn to some of the questions from audience members. And just as a reminder, if you are joining us and have a question, you can put that in the chat and we'll ask those questions aloud to folks. So the first question is, how will racial and cultural diversity be increased among teachers and ESPs in Malden Public Schools? As a former Malden High student, I'm aware that the student body is one of the most diverse in the state and yet the current teacher body does not reflect the same diversity. There has been some progress, though the steps still feel too small. So first for that, we will ask Ms. Hordy.
I think I touched on it a little bit earlier, but I want to go back to it. I want to highlight the fact that we have a diverse student population. They're, they're here. I imagine that there are a faction of them that might want to go into education or there are students who might be interested in just working with children in general. Maybe who might want to have an ESP type position as they were testing out whether they wanted to be in education. I, I think that's really the best place to start. These students are aware of our community. They have experienced the public school system on their own and they can bring a wealth of knowledge to that. I actually am familiar with a teacher at the high school who I know was a Malden High graduate, graduate who loves her job. But I also think that we can't negate the fact that people have left teaching and education en masse post-COVID. So hiring as a general rule is very difficult right now. It doesn't mean that it can't be done and it doesn't mean that we can't look within and really highlight the positions that we do have. But I think that's probably the best way to start making sure that our teachers mirror our students. Thanks.
All right. Thanks so much. Next up, Mr. Drummy.
Sorry about that. I got a thing in the middle of my window. Again, we are a very diverse district and we're getting there slowly but surely. I know our, featured student ratio as far as, oh God, I knew this was gonna happen. It's tough to get old. We're trying and like it's been said, we have to retract and pay better to get the people in here to do, to get them to do that. I mean, I know the, I know the district has been going to job fairs. They've been going to colleges, they've been sending out feelers and it, it's just a matter of time before it happens, but it's a slow progress. And because again, as been, as we've discussed, after this COVID, we're, we're losing. I mean, I personally know three people that have left the teaching field because they, they get, they felt burned out or they had been turned into referees in not teaching. So i- i- it's really tough. So the best thing we can do is, is just keep trying and, and enticing them and get them to come in and maybe start like, as been said earlier, you know, it was early, I, I, I thought they had a program here earlier where students, once they graduated from college, they were local and they come back in and use them as a groundswell for us to, to work in the district and they should maybe still do with that. So we'll see. Thank you.
Hey, thank you so much. The, next for this audience question, we'll have Ms. Batafora.
Thank you. I think both Ms. Hordy and Mr. Drummy kind of touched upon just the difficulty in, in recruiting teachers in general. Not just minority teachers or those that represent our, our very diverse district, but I think not only is it a matter of we, of, of getting teachers into the classroom, it's really about retaining those that we have, those that we value in, in showing that we value them. That is really, you want someone to love their job. You, I know I want to go to work every day and be appreciated and know that the work that I'm putting in is valued by those that I'm working for. So retaining quality teachers, how do we do that? Treating them kindly. Incentives. And I don't know exactly what that looks like. But also, when we do have students that, that may be interested in an education career, scholarships, offering scholarships to maybe come back into the district after you've completed your degree. We have to really think outside of the box on this one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. The next question coming from the audience is, I would like to know what you as a school committee member will do to help secure more funding for Malden's public school students. From what I understand, we receive funding that does not support the entire community of students we serve. There is a huge discrepancy. So, Mr. Drummy, if you could try to answer that first, please, and thank you.
Thank you. As was stated earlier, the chapter seventy funding formula is out of whack and that needs to be worked on desperately. I mean, we've had the Student Opportunity Act, which has given us more money. But we, we've also had grant, we've got grant writers now. We got a great budget director that stays on top of things. And the people, I mean, there's federal monies and then we have the state delegation too with Rep. Donato, Altrino, Edgby and Lipper and Senator Lewis. Yeah, I would stay, talk to them. I mean, the city can only apportion so much of its available money towards the schools. The rest has to come from outside. And that's the tough part. That's the tough part. But stay on top of the, stay on top of the state delegation, let them know how you feel. Yes, we need help. Yes, we need more money, whatever you can do. And again, we're, I know they're writing grants and we're getting it and I, I'm a little confused as to the part where there's a discrepancy. All the money that comes in gets used by the school department to the best of its abilities. So I, I was a little shocked to see that comment when I was reading. But again, that's, that's basically it. All comes down to cash. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Next up, Ms. Batafora.
Thank you. Honestly, we need to be a thorn in the sides of our state legislators because we have screamed and hollered that the funding formula is incorrect and we're told there's nothing that can be done. There is something that can be done and we have to be loud in, in demands that change happens. We're also lucky that our mayor sits on the school committee as the chair who does decide on how much the city is going to give us. And in this past year, it was increased by twelve million. But I would urge my peers on the school committee to speak with their city councilors in their wards as well on how we can increase revenue in the city to make sure that we are getting the money that, that we need. The school budget is the biggest line item for this city. So it's really important that the decisions that are being made outside of the school committee by the mayor, by the city council, that also affects the money that, that we're, that is desperately, desperately needed. So, and, and you know, Mr. Drummy did touch upon grants. There, there is so much money out there to be had and it's really comes down to making sure that we have people in place that are spending their days finding these grants, writing these grants and, and bringing money into our district, whether it's federal grant money, private grant money. It's out there. We just need to spend the money to make sure that we're keeping people in that position to, to do that really important work. But I would say it, it takes a village really from our state legislators to our city councilors, right down to our own finance director to make sure we're spending wisely and getting the money.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. And Ms. Hordy.
This one's a little bit more complicated for me because I'm just sort of beginning to learn about how funding works, but the first thing that comes to my mind is what would move people? And by that, I mean, what would move our legislators? What would move the governor? What would move the lieutenant governor, who is also a mayor in Salem? Where I imagine there was similar funding issues at times. To me, the first thing that pops to mind is, is parents, is us as the school committee, as state senators, how are we communicating with them and how are we communicating with them regularly? Like most people, we don't necessarily think of things until they're right in front of us or they're coming up for review. So I, I don't think most of us sit and say, you know, about that school budget. But unfortunately, if we're not communicating with our legislators consistently about the school budget, it becomes one of a laundry list of things. So I, I'd like to help rally the parents as much as I would communicate with Jason Lewis, let's say. But, but I think that there's a way, if we all combine everything together, we can be a much louder voice and hopefully that will help. Thanks.
Hey, thanks so much. I'm gonna shift gears and take a crossing out of order so that we can hear another voice from the audience. And so the question that was asked in the chat is, I am currently a public school educator and a Malden resident. Retention and teacher burnout are at an all-time high, especially post-pandemic. In what ways do you foresee utilizing your role to empower, support and reinvigorate a love for teaching and learning among educators and administrators in the Malden Public Schools? So the first person that I'll call on to answer this question is Ms. Batafora.
Thank you for that question. Man, I still feel like I need to be invigorated after the pandemic. It's something that just seems to linger. I, I think I'm gonna go back to a previous question in regards to getting teachers in the classroom and it's really about that retention. What can we do to retain our educators? What can we do to get them excited? I think there's a variety of things and some of them are being done and maybe we just need to go bigger and go better. We have amazing PTOs in our schools that I know are welcoming educators back in with lunches and gatherings, get togethers. I think it's a feeling of, of being respected though. I think a lot of it, you know, I'm gonna age myself a little and go back to when I was in school, teachers have Teachers had teacher autonomy to be able to teach what they do best. They went to school to teach. And now they are, they're teaching to test, they're teaching MCAS, and they're not able to do what they passionately love. And we need to give them that ability again to do what they do best. Um, and that in turn is gonna help our students, because all of our students learn di- differently. But our teachers know their students, um, their students best. They know how to teach them, they're there with them uh day in and day out. So give them a little bit more in the classroom, I think.
Thank you, Ms. Batifora. Next here, we're going to turn to Ms. Hordy.
This is a great question, um, because I think we can go in a lot of different ways with this. Um, but I'm gonna sort of pick up where Jennifer left off and say, we need to treat teachers as professionals. They know what they're doing, they've been trained to do this, um, just like you would at your job, you would be treated as a professional. Um, but I also think there's a certain amount of um empathy and understanding that needs to go along with that. They, they need to feel as though they are wanted and needed in our community. And I think that that's something that has sort of fallen by the wayside a little bit. Um, Ms. Batifora also mentioned earlier, our children spend so much time at school with teachers, and we want to remember that they're doing this, yes, it is their job, yes, they are professional, but they also are doing this because they genuinely care about children. So acknowledging that, but also offering certain things within, you know, the realm of, um. I'm, I'm not entirely sure what the, the programming is for this now, but are there ways that we can help teachers sort of further um their own education that we can support at Malden? Is there other opportunities that we can offer for them within the school day that would help to empower them to feel stronger about what they're doing? But also to feel um, to feel respected. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. And Mr. Drummy.
Um, thank you. Um. Back when I was in school, I always thought, you know, teachers were your and they are, you, your friends, there's somebody, yeah, I could talk to them, sit down. If I had problems, I could relate, they could relate to me a little bit, or I could use them as a sounding board. The last few years, and especially coming out of the covid theory that we have been, I mean, they are feeling the burnout and everything, but also I think they're acting more like referees and not teaching. When people got in, I mean, I've got family members that have been, that are teaching at all different levels, either in Boston or, or in higher education, and it's like they wanted a teacher, they teach because they like the fact that they can teach, and they like the kids and they want to do it. But I don't know, there, there, there's a climate out there today, and, and, and it's sad because I, I, I think teacher be, teachers have been taken for granted. They're not thought of nicely. I don't know, it's just, it, it's just gotten bad. And I think we gotta get them to be that way again. They want to be there, and i- 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 it's, it's sad, but again, offering incentives maybe uh to help them, uh, just show them that they're appreciated, they love them. Parents, please, you know, let them know that you appreciate what you're doing with their children, because it, it's a tough job, it really is, and they, they need to hear it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Drummy. Um, next we'll ask the um last question that was asked by the audience members. Um, and then we'll shift gears to closing remarks, and then we'll wrap up. Um, so the last question of the evening is uh from an audience member who asked, it's great to add more languages, but we need to find teachers to teach it. We have not been able to fill the Spanish teacher position at our school, and now it has switched to something completely um, completely different subject at one of the schools. What measures are you taking or would you take to recruit these types of positions? So first to answer this question is um Elizabeth Hordy.
So I think one of the things that we might want to be looking into for um recruiting language teachers is a sort of a similar process to one that I know that we had used at my school in terms of recruiting an art teacher. I know it's not exactly the same, but it's the same sort of idea because it's much more of a specialized skill. Um, because there's both an education degree that they're going, and a lot of times people have a, a dual major with um their language. So I, I, a lot of times I think to partnerships with, we, we are sitting in the middle of so many wonderful schools um, and colleges and universities, partnering with some of the schools that are around here and having a better understanding of the programs that they offer, the languages that they offer, what they have the students that are graduating from their programs, and sort of working to see how we can get people in. Now, I know as the adjustment counselor in my building, I communicate with the adjustment counselors in other school districts, especially in the surrounding area, to better understand the providers out in, in the communities and other things like that. I would say, you know, we might want to reach out to some of the other districts that are nearby. Are, do they have a large language department? Can they share with us a little bit more about how they recruited folks? Um, I think it would just make sense to communicate in a broader way about that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next we'll hear from Mr. Drummy.
Uh, a- again, it's, it, it's, it's getting, getting to find where these people are that we can get them here. I mean, we can try job fairs, or what Elizabeth just said, going out to uh other districts. But then again, you don't want to poach from other districts, because then you can be turned around and be poached from yourself, so you don't want that. So i- i- it's a fine line, and it's something that we, that, that, that is being worked on, but it's, it's, it just takes a while. And again, word of mouth, uh, I'm sure teachers, uh, I've seen it on some of the boards here with this, with the, you know, hey, come work in Malden, it's a great place. And i- i- it is. I mean, we've, we've got a, probably the best group of teachers I would put up against anybody in the state anyway. And i- it's a, it's a, it's a fun atmosphere to the extent that yes, it's not the best place in the world, but it's not the worst place either, and we're doing okay. So I think just, i- it's coming along. It's matriculating, and it's getting there, and eventually it will. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And um last up, Ms. Batifora.
Thank you. Um, yeah, this one's, this one's really unfortunate, because I know it's actually BB. I feel like that's my school, but I, that we needed a Spanish teacher, um, could not recruit one. So we had to pivot, I believe, to maybe it was a STEM offering, and I'm pretty sure we had difficulty in recruiting for that position as well. Um, in speaking with our superintendent recently, um, Desi is offering, or and I'm not a hundred percent on this, so I don't want to speak out of turn, but they are starting to understand the difficulty in recruiting um, for world language teachers and um have actually started going out to other countries to help teachers get their visas to come teach here because they're such assorted. So hopefully you'll see that on the horizon to help us um garner more teachers in, in the world language field. Um, but I'd say, you know, we can't sit around and wait for that to happen. Again, it's, it's recruiting from within. So when we see students that are passionate about education, and maybe there are else students, um, and they can utilize having, you know, being bilingual, trilingual um, to give back to the community that has given to them. And um maybe looking at, again, offering scholarships to, to those students that are passionate about being in education to get them um those degrees, so they come back to Malden and, and proudly work with us. Thank you.
Hey, thank you so much. Thank you to all the panelists for all of the great questions and to the audience as well. We're going to move at this time to have the uh candidates have an opportunity to share their closing remarks. And um each candidate will have one and a half minutes to do so. Um, so first we'll start with uh Mr. Drummy.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, I want to say thank you uh for having this forum uh tonight. Uh, I appreciate it. Being a school representative, uh, it's, I like it. It, 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 it makes me feel like I'm accomplishing something, especially I've got two. I got my wife and my daughter are, are in the system as teachers here in Malden, and I get to hear some of the problems that I probably shouldn't because, well, you know, teachers talk, it's favorite that. And uh, I like the job. It's fun. Uh, I hope going forward, we attract more candidates for this position. In another two years, I'd like to see a lot more than just the sitting members of the committee running. Uh, hopefully, you know, with the, with the increases that they just put through for uh races for us, uh, it's an incentive to get new blood. Instead of all farts like me sitting on the committee, we'll get some young kids with some good ideas like Elizabeth and Jen to come into the department and start doing things. So um, thank you for having us all here tonight. I appreciate it. Uh, for those of you in Ward One, if you're watching, and if you want to vote for me, I'd appreciate it. Uh, I think I've done a pretty good job so far. Uh, I've got two more years. Let's see what we can do. And um, thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you so much. And um next, Ms. Batifora.
There we go. Um, thank you for, for the amazing sponsors um that have put this together. Um, I think we should be doing this not during election years. Let's listen and, and, and see what people have to say. Um, you know, a couple of times a year, what are we doing? How are we moving the city forward, the district forward? Um, so I, I'm sure now that I put that out there, May is gonna jump right on it, and we'll be back here in six months. But um, I'm looking forward to the next two years in office. Each term has taught me so much. Um, and I'm excited to learn and grow in this position, to be a voice for so many, but also be an ear to listen to concerns. So um, I'm easily accessible. Phone, email, social media, you can find me. Um, I have to say, most of my favorite conversations are actually the ones where I'm stopped and stop and shop by a parent that goes, hey, aren't you so-and-so? This is what's going on. Um, so please, please reach out. Don't be hesitant. Um, this is, this is a passion. This is not a job. Um, and I can probably say that for all of us that, that sit up on that stage once a month. Um, you have to truly love and care about your city, your students, and um to, to take the, the late night calls, to answer the emails, to sit in, in long meetings. Um, and I'm very proud to sit with those up there, and I'm very much looking forward to adding Ms. Forty to the mix. So please come out November seventh, vote for Jen, Ward Three, and we will see you all soon at the next school committee meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Ms. Hordy, um, it's time for your closing remarks.
Thank you so much for hosting and for organizing everything that goes into this. I know it's not easy. And I'd like to espe- especially thank the Malden High students for asking us questions. Um, I really appreciate hearing from them um and their firsthand experience um and the questions that they have about that. I'm really looking forward to this. Um. The school committee was not necessarily something that I had ever thought a lot about until recently. But I think that s- some of the experiences that I've had, um, I'd like to bring my knowledge and share it with everyone. I'm really looking forward to meet some families that I haven't met yet. I, I know I've spent a lot of time introducing myself during the nomination process um, and making sure that I am available at events and things in the community. Speaking of Halloween party this weekend at Forest Hill, um, hosted by Mr. Robert Murphy. But um, I want to make sure that everyone feels like they can come to me if they need to. I also want them to know that I am a partner with families as much as I am a partner with the school district. Um, I think it's important to know that we all are gonna work together on this, and we need to communicate with each other about things. That's the only way that things are actually going to get solved as opposed to um, just sort of airing our concerns. Um, I'm really looking forward to being sworn in and getting this started. I'm looking forward to working with everybody that's already on the committee. Um, so vote for me, Ward Five. Thanks.
Great, thank you so much. Um, I know that May has some words and wrap up, but before I turn this over to May just as a reminder, um, that you can find your place to vote on the city website. And when you close out of the Zoom tonight, you'll be asked, um, you'll have a pop-up poll asking you about this forum as well as your plan to vote. So if you don't know yet where, or when, or how to vote, um, that is the key, and you'll be able to find out through the city. Um, but we do hope that you'll be able to get out and vote. Um, May, I'll turn this over to you now, and thank you as well as the other organizers, as well as uh the candidates.
It's wonderful. Thank you so much, Judy. This is a wonderful um process that, tonight, I'm learning so much. I want to thank all of you participating in this event tonight, and at the same time, I would like to particularly thank our three candidates because you guys are putting the most heavy duty on your shoulders, that because now if you, all, now all the candidates show up tonight. So and you have uh answered all the questions, and that shows really your character. And I can tell that you all have a great passion doing this. Again, without passion, it just goes nowhere. And I really feel very thankful that um I will believe that when you are out there doing something good, you never go out of fashion. So thank you again, and definitely Jane, I will take our new word and reach out to you. I think this conversation is very constructive and educational. So I feel that the parents need to um have more dialogue with, with, uh, working with the, with you guys. And the same time, high school students who are very passionate about education, and they wanted to also help the school do better. And of course, they will put in their own uh effort to it too. So thank you again. And now that you can help to put a little uh input your poll uh to this um that we have done for, for tonight. So thank you again, and thank you all our collaborators. We are putting so much time and effort to this. And so now we can conclude our this year's meaning the candidates forum for this municipal election. And again, come out to vote. Thank you, and have a uh great weekend.